The Muscatine City Council in-depth session will come to order. We'll begin this evening's agenda with a roll call by Greg Monsecker.
Councilmember Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Atfig.
Present.
Shahadeh.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Six present, one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, Greg. Council, we have one action item on tonight's agenda, so we'll get this over with. Presented for City Council's consideration is a proclamation declaring October 15th, 2013 as White Kane Safety Day, obviously an awareness item for those that have a vision impairment. Is there a motion to accept the consideration? Bob?
Second.
Second. Jeanette, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hosne. Moschieri, six zero. Okay, item number three on tonight's agenda is a presentation on the refuse collection pilot program.
As Laura's walking to the podium, she's going to kick things off with a quick announcement regarding, well, I'll let her tell you.
Well, thank you very much.
Would you like a drum roll for that?
No, it's okay. It's okay. I'm good. But this past week, I've spent some time in council blocks at our statewide solid waste and recycling conference. Believe it or not, there is such a conference for garbage and recycling. Members of all throughout our entire state of Iowa and the Midwest attend, and it was an honor to be nominated on behalf of the City of Muscatine, which this award is to the City of Muscatine, the recycling center and transfer station for recycle the dress, our prom project that we do this past two years, and we'll do it again this year, for the 2013 Innovative Recycling Project Award for the State of Iowa.
Wow, good for you.
So, this was an honor. I'd like you all to look at this, because we need to start a trophy collection down at the transfer station for future awards.
Make the cabinet a big one.
But yes, it was an honor, and it's an honor to receive an award, but it's much more of an honor to provide a program that has benefited close to 200 girls in the past two years and within Muscatine County. So, we will be doing that program again. So, moving on from prom dresses to garbage trucks and collection and cans, see, I get to do all the fun stuff.
What a segue.
Now, if I turn this on, oh, we're already on. All right. Well, tonight, I'm excited to bring to you our next step in the refuse collection program. A couple of years ago, we talked about curbside recycling. That's been very successful. We've also talked in the past two years about moving towards an automated collection program. And as we have shared in past budget sessions, there is a lot of capital cost involved in a moving towards automated collection. Staff has reviewed options, and we presented to council last, during our last budget session, at moving this into phases. So, we are starting this year, maybe. Yeah, that's what I think's good. Wait a minute. There we go. It was just, it was asleep. So, a lot of people, and this isn't a discussion around town now, and I think there'll be more after tonight's presentation, is why are we doing this? Why do we want to change our collection method? We've had rear loader garbage trucks for a long time. We've had several guys on a truck throwing trash, and these are our key points that we would really like to project out in this program. One, and always important, is protect our staff from injuries caused by heavy lifting of the containers. Numerous injuries occur each year. We have been very fortunate in the City of Muscatine to have a very low workman's comp cost due to injuries, but our workforce is getting older, and it's been a proven fact that our workforce in the solid waste industry is in the top 10 dangerous positions in America, especially garbage collection. We want to keep staff out of the line of traffic. That will come into effect more with our automated trucks. Reduce workers' comp insurance, I already mentioned that. Our beautification of our community. I must say, the first time I saw the recycling cans, when I pulled out on Mulberry Avenue and saw all those blue cans lined up, was a very neat sight to see, and I think people saw that, and it just really brought uniformity to the neighborhoods with seeing that. And I think that that's certainly going to do something with a container program, because there is a container in every household eventually. There's no just a garbage bag sitting out, potential of waste being broke, you know, tore into by animals, blowing around at containers. It's a solid, sturdy container. And this program is also part of our goal of the City of Muscatine's comprehensive plan. So, we are moving forward with our plan. Just a little history, some people might be wondering, well, what's automated collection? What's semi-automated collection? So, I'm going to give you a brief, you know, intro on this. Our automated collection is when no manual lifting is required to collect waste. And on the back, well, I'm sorry, I've already skipped a slide here in my mind, is automated is the art, and I think everybody's very familiar in Muscatine about automated collection. We see that with allied waste with the recycling, the automated arm comes out, picks up the container, dumps the waste, and would put it back down, just like the recycling truck does. Semi-automated collection, which is what we'll be moving through with our pilot program, which will be starting this fall, is when we still have a worker that's out on the back collecting, but they're not lifting the container. All the waste is placed in the container, it is wheeled from the curb, wheeled to the back of the truck, lifted on a hydraulic lift on the back of the current garbage trucks. Our pilot program, as I said earlier, in the 2013-2014 budget, we had approved $50,000 for the pilot program. This included the four cart tippers, 800 containers. We did 700 of the 65 gallon, which is our regular standard size that's out for recycling now, and 100 of the 35 gallons. And the reason we did 135 gallon is there will be some residents that will want a smaller container, because they're live by themselves, they don't want to push a heavy container, and so that will suit them well. Residents can let us know if they want that size. In our pilot program, we have the two cart tippers, will be placed on the back, as I mentioned, of our garbage trucks, and the tippers that are unique, that are purchased, we call it their Perkin brand in the solid waste industry, and what they do is they will fold up underneath the back of the garbage truck. Because we do commercial waste also with dumpsters, this allows for us to continue our commercial services, because it's not sticking out in the back of the garbage truck, like the traditional tippers do. And so, this is making sure that we have dual purposes of our trucks. The newest, our last two newest trucks that were purchased in 2008, 2009, will have the tippers put on the back of them. And these are, the tipper adds to a transitional time period for us. And again, as I had mentioned, we'll continue the redundancy for our program. Containers, this is always a hot topic. I know when recycling came on, what are the containers like? What size? How can I get my container? So, we have two different sizes, and this picture on the screen, I have, well, I apologize, this one on council chambers looks much bigger than what it is, but it is a 65 gallon, which is our standard size that we have with allied waste, and we also offer the 35 gallon. It can be requested. How our residents can request this that are in our pilot program, they can contact us either through the office, at the transfer station, or right on the front page of our City of Muscatine's website is a link, there is a form they fill out, it automatically emails to my email, and I'll put them on a list. And we have a list of addresses that are in the pilot program. So, if they would like the 100, the 35 gallon, we can do that. Containers will be delivered late October, early November. Right now, based upon what I heard this week, it'll probably be early November for delivery of the containers. Once they are delivered, there is a code on each container, a number. These are specialized to Muscatine, based upon the year that that container was purchased. This allows for us to know in the future when we purchase those containers. Also, we are going to, since we're doing this in phases, our staff that delivers it, will be done by our full-time and part-time staff, will be recording the address that each container goes to, and that container belongs to the property of that home, and so if someone moves, they should be leaving that container with them, because if not, we start replacing containers rapidly, and this has happened in the recycling program. So, we want to make sure that we code with the address, the container. And also, if a container gets, you know, broken, we can replace it, and it also helps us in our database. So, we will be working on a database of who has containers over time. The top of the container, just like the recycling container had information, majority of them, we do have a few green-lidded containers out there. This will be done a little bit different, it's going to be more long and narrow instead of this design. I talked to the firm this week on this, but the important thing is that we want to make sure that we have contact information out for our residents, that is, they can contact, get onto the city's website at any time, or there's a phone number, they can contact us. We also felt it was very important to make sure that they understand what's allowed in this container, residential garbage only, we do not want yard waste in there, we do not want construction debris, medical waste, those are some things that we deal with every day. Medical waste, of course, we're dealing with medical sharps, used needles, items like that, and also our household hazardous waste. We want to keep those out, and those are all important items that people understand. And finally, on the container, it will detail when that container is supposed to go out on the curb, so that way our code's on there, no earlier than 4:00 PM and no later than 5:00 AM the day of. So, those are all important details, we feel people need to know. And we do also are trying to make sure that we're training, not training, but just a friendly reminder, we have told people with recycling, there needs to be a three-foot clearance around the bin. Same thing will go with your garbage container. When we move to automated, we want to have enough clearance, so we're not knocking down the mailboxes, or having to slow down our process, or put that, out on a busy street, put that driver out in the line of traffic. As far as who's going to get a container, now, this map is pretty full detailed here, and the pink areas, the pink areas show who is in our pilot program. The green lines separate each day that we collect. As you can see, this is not our full city map of services, but this is where we are collecting at. We also have this available on the website, so you residents can pull up the map to see. If they have any questions, they can contact our office, send me an email, and we can look up to see if they're in the program or not for this. I feel that we have a very wide representation of residential areas. We have some that are a cul-de-sac, which will be very different in collecting versus in a busy, more narrow street alleyway. So, this is going to be a very good pilot program. As you see on Tuesday, I do want to point this out right now, there is no highlighted pink area on Tuesday. When we did some reconfiguring of routes, we took off the residential, smaller routes on Tuesday, and put them on a different route, but what we will probably do at this point is look at our downtown situation and add some containers, once we have our residentials put in place, in the downtown areas, which will help with some downtown issues also. And this is my last slide of my presentation. What will happen after we start our pilot program? We get this out in November. That gives us a few months to review the program, see how it's going, what are our challenges, successes of the program? We anticipate, and we hope to bring, or you're going to hear this at budget time, us wanting to expand the program. And this gives us a good, a few months under our belt before budget time to talk about the program, and where, obviously, our next expansion would be more containers and possibly a purchase of an automated truck. So, at this time, this is our pilot program for refuse collection. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
I'm assuming, Laura, that it takes one man or person towards the rear of the vehicle to match, marry up the container with the tipper?
Yes.
And then it's just levers after that?
Yes. Yes. And we put two tippers on the truck, because we do have, yes, we have a driver, and we have a throw, you know, a thrower on the back, but we do have times our driver gets out and is getting your trash at the same time as the other person. This will make it so if they are in those more narrow areas, and they both get out, especially alleyways, they're both right on the sides of it to take care of it. Yes.
I have two questions, Laura. One, is there a cost for the containers provided to the citizen? And second, with this program, are we anticipating increase in refuse collection?
At this point, we, there, this was budgeted, the pilot program was budgeted within our current, our current budget, and there was no additional charges. We have not changed our rate since we started the curbside recycling program, of the $20 per regular household and 15 for our senior rate. And at this point in time, you know, obviously, we haven't figured out budgets for future, but as, just speaking on behalf of doing budgets, we would try to keep that cost within our current frame of what we're working with, per cost.
Laurie, you're going to have, people can request the containers. So, how many for the pilot program? It says two tippers, but how many of the containers?
Oh, the containers? We have approximately a little over 700 households. Originally, we looked at this 750, but the more we looked into the routes, we had some commercial areas. They were residential, but they have dumpsters, because they're apartments. We have 700 of the 65 gallons, and 100 of the 35, and so, the reason that majority of people are going to want a 65, we give them an option to have the 35. Does that answer your question, Scott?
Well, I guess, I was thinking, maybe, maybe people are going to have to request even the 65, but it's just the 35.
No, no. It's just the 35. 65 is our default size.
Okay.
Just like we did in the recycling program.
Anyone else, Council? Very good. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Good job. And next on the agenda, Stephanie Romanoe with a lean presentation.
I'm going to spend a few minutes tonight giving you an overview of where we are with the lean program that we've been working on over the last probably year and a half or so now. We've been working toward some lean activities throughout the city. So, I'm going to set up a little bit of the history of what we've done so far, and kind of where we're going, where we're going from here. So, from the beginning...
CSI stands for?
I'm going to get to, I'm going to get to that.
Okay, that's not the TV show or something?
Kind of a play on that, I guess. From the beginning of talking about providing lean initiatives and lean training throughout the city, we started with some assistance from H&amp;I. They have an active lean program in their manufacturing facility, and they are carrying it into their business processes. And so, they offered us some assistance to get started, and provided us some with initial training. We had a day that we, a couple of days that we spent out at MCC, where their staff came in and did some training with our management staff on some of the ideas behind lean and some of the activities that go along with it. They had some meetings with us to organize our thoughts and ideas about how we would, how we could proceed, how this would apply to the city, which obviously is more service-oriented than manufacturing-oriented. And then they moved into, they also provided us some assistance with facilitating within our own department, some activities, and introducing the staff to the ideas, and that their assistance was really helpful in getting us started and helping us organize our thought process. We formed our own committee, which were people that volunteered that had an interest in this topic. Jerry Evers, our fire chief, John Cook, and John is here tonight from the water pollution control plant, Kristy Corpey, who is our transit supervisor, and myself. I didn't really volunteer, I kind of got volunteered, but I've been thoroughly enjoying this topic very much. We, John and I actually attended a week-long training in Michigan last December. We got to go to Detroit in December. That was really fun. And all of the committee members have attended some training at H&amp;I, the training that they offered to their employees when they, when they are new to the company, we all got to attend and sit through. Several of the department heads and supervisors throughout the city have attended Iowa Lean Consortium activities, and those have been conducted all over the state in a variety of different topics related to lean activities. We're in the process of providing training to all of the employees. We have a lean library, so there's reading material available to anybody that's interested. And we came up with our own lean brand, which is CSI Muscatine Continuous Service Improvement. Lean is often thought of as a manu, kind of a manufacturing sector activity, really designed for processes on a manufacturing line, but it, so we wanted to create something that was more focused on what we do, which is provide service to the community. And the basic purposes of lean concepts are to be more customer-focused, to make sure that the services that we're providing to the community are the ones that our citizens and the city council expect us to be providing, that we're doing those as efficiently and effectively as possible, and that our employees have the ability to solve issues and problems at the lowest level possible, that they don't always have to be coming to a manager to solve their problems, that they, that they can do some of those things on their own. So, we've spent the last, took us quite a long time to create our own training and come up with what we wanted to convey to employees as we started through this process. And the first training includes a presentation to the employees of what the city's mission, vision, and values are. I know as city council, you spent some time in the last couple of years working on fine-tuning what your vision for the city and what the city's mission are, and we've been conveying that to the employees, and asking them to think about how their role in the city, what their job, how their job relates to what our mission is. We've been talking with them about why we're doing this, some of the challenges that are facing us economically, just the expectations that our citizens have, the expectations that USC council have of us as an organization. We're presenting them with the four bedrock rules of lean, and each employee in the first training is required to do some homework, and that homework is for them to review their own work area or their own tasks, and see where they can make just one simple improvement. I just put the values in here so that, to remind you all of what we collectively have decided our organizational values are, and we go through these words in the training. The department head spent some time several months ago talking about what those words mean, so that we have common definitions of those words, and in the first training, employees are asked to think about those words in relation to those definitions, and how those specifically apply to what they do in their jobs and in their everyday work. And then, the next piece of the training is to actually share with them the basic rules of lean, and this is just an introduction overview for them. We talk about these four rules and what they mean, and how, as we get more into the process, these things will be applying to their, to their regular, to their regular activities. And the whole presentation that I'm, that we are giving is on the wall in the conference room downstairs, so if any of you are interested in seeing the whole thing, I just pulled out a couple of pieces for you to get an idea of what we're sharing with them. The goals we have for the first training are to develop their understanding of our mission, vision, and values, to elicit their support and buy-in. We need, for this initiative to be successful, they have to participate, and they have to want to contribute to the process, to work on establishing some common vocabulary around our values and around the lean concepts, and then, once again, obviously, to introduce them to the, to what those concepts mean. So far, about half of the employees have been through this first training. Everybody is going to be required to attend it, and the feedback from the initial training has been very positive. Employees are enjoying it, they like the idea of thinking a little bit differently about how they do what they do and why they do what they do. We've also created the second training, and we've only presented it actually once, and it builds upon that first training, adds in what the principles of lean are, and requires them to do some more homework. And also, in this second training, we're having them report back to us what they did for their homework from the first training. And I was actually pleasantly surprised by, that they had all done their homework, everybody had an example of something that they had done, and the things varied from things that they did to just simplify their work, take steps out that weren't needed, to eliminate redundant tasks, or things where they made copies of things that went nowhere except for maybe in a drawer, or something like that, to kind of reorganizing their workspace so that it was easier for them to maneuver. And that was all we wanted them to do, was something really simple that just introduced them to this way of thinking. In the second training, we talk about the five principles, and these are the, these are the five things that are the foundation of improving our processes, and as they learn these, we'll be going back through to teach them some of the actual tools of lean, so that they can apply them to their workplace. So, these are our goals for the second training, is to be more, be prepared to learn the various lean tools that we, that are available to them. Some of the activities that have already occurred, management staff, like I said before, H&amp;I facilitated some training for us, and we did a value stream mapping, which is a particular lean tool. a value stream mapping, which is a particular lean tool, on our purchase order process, our payroll process, and our citizen complaint process. And from those activities, made some changes to the way that we do things, to streamline things a little bit, try to make information coming into the departments a little bit easier. We've, are in the process of doing our financial software upgrade and a lot of, helped us frame, this exercise helped us frame a lot of the things that we wanted and needed as we were purchasing that process. The fire department has conducted some value stream mapping on the administrative duties of the fire captain in particular, which was a really administratively-heavy position. And they really evaluated why they were doing what they were doing and implemented some improvements based on that activity. Public Works has done some processes. They've done some additional training internally to introduce value stream mapping to their employees. They've been working on doing some kind of debriefing activities after a snow event, going back through, how did this go? What can we do better the next time? Where did we make mistakes? Where can we improve? Made some use of new technology this summer. You're probably aware of the sidewalk inventory project that they did. And so they've been working to find ways to be more efficient in the activities that they do. And the library has conducted a number of lean activities and also, and they're here to talk to you tonight, so I'm not going to go into detail because they're, they're the next presentation. And as we move forward, we're going to, we're just continuing, we've been taking kind of baby steps in this process. We're making progress, but we really wanted to lay the foundation, make sure that employees really understood why we're doing this and what the philosophy behind it is, so that it can sustain itself and continue to move forward. So we're going to keep, keep progressing with the training, encouraging employees to implement their, their ideas to improve work processes. We're working on some things like standard work instructions. We're working on doing some establishment metrics so that we know what we're measuring and we can tell if we're getting better in doing things, if we're actually making some improvement. And the final thought that I have is that lean is a journey. This isn't an activity that will ever end. It's something that will, the goal is that it just becomes an integral part of the way that we operate and do business and that employees are always thinking of the next thing that we can improve and do better or more efficiently, or more costly, you know, cost-saving measures or whatever it might be, given the topic that they're working on. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have them. Okay.
Thank you Steph.
With that, I'll turn it, are you Greg or Pam?
I, I'm talking Greg. I have to click.
I don't know how to get on.
Yeah, I click and talk. I just want to support some of what Stephanie was saying. A lot of my staff has been to the city's lean training and they've had very positive reactions. While we have done a number of lean events, we've pretty much had almost exactly the same staff over and over so far because of the areas we've chosen to focus on. So not as much of the, the staff has been involved and that's been their only exposure. And I apologize, I do have a cold. I'd like to begin by introducing the people that I have here with me today. The first is library board member Peggy Gordon, who spent 25, or has spent 35 years as an HNI employee. Twenty-plus years of that time included working on RCI, Kaizen, did I say that right? Okay. And lean initiatives. In her formative years, ages 15 to 20, she was working at Musser Public Library doing a range of jobs from book processor to homebound coordinator. So I think you might be able to see why Peggy is uniquely qualified to be the coach of the library's lean journey. Greg Benefield, who's doing all the clicking for us, began his library career as a shelve at age 17. And during his 30 years of service to the library, he rapidly progressed to a circulation clerk and is currently the circulation manager. I'd also like to acknowledge Mary Anna Haath, our technical services librarian, who could not be here tonight, but she was involved in all three of the events with Peggy, Greg, and myself, so. What I want to do today is to talk a little bit about what lean is. I promised Greg I'd keep this very short, so we don't have a lot of time. I also want to tell you a little bit about the three lean events that we've had at the library, what we did and how we found them useful. And then I have some candid observations about lean in general, so. The first thing I think we want to talk about is what is lean? And I know Stephanie struggled with that a little bit too. You can find a lot of different definitions for it, but I like this one. Lean is the practice that considers the expenditure of resources for any goal other than the creation of value for the in-patron to be wasteful and thus a target for elimination. And creation of value and removing waste are two major lean concepts that we've been working with. In our experience with lean, we talked a lot about waste or muda, which is, I guess, the Japanese word for waste. Some of the common wastes that the library deals with include delay, duplication, unclear communication, unnecessary movement, incorrect inventory, and opportunity lost to retain or win patrons. So I'm sure you can see, while some of what we're going to talk about is more of a, almost a factory process, a lot of what we're dealing with, with lean is more service-oriented and the things that we talk about are different than you might talk about if you were on a factory floor. We were early adopters of the city's lean process. I'd restructured many parts of the library over the last five years, but with rapidly changing technology and the looming possibility of budget cuts, I knew we'd need to restructure to continue to adapt. The lean process excited me because it provides a more participatory way of going about these changes. In the past, when I've done restructuring, even on a very small scale, it mostly would involve me going in my office, thinking about things, thinking about how other libraries work, thinking about what I thought would, would work best, and then I go back to the person and say, okay, you're now doing this, 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 or you're, you know, you're moving over here, or whatever. And there was a lot of fear involved with that and sometimes some resentment. I think mostly just because people weren't really involved in the process. The restructuring always worked very well, but I don't think it was always worth it. But as I shared the information about lean with my board, I discovered that Peggy and John Moteki, both HNI employees, were willing to guide us through our first few lean events. So being a librarian, the first thing I did was to do a lot of reading on the topic. And I learned two things. One, with a few notable exceptions, libraries don't do lean. So that meant we really had no place to look to say, you know, ABC library looked at their technical services by doing this, this, and this, and they looked at these metrics and blah, blah, blah. We didn't have anything like that. The second thing I learned is that reading wasn't going to help us. We were going to need Peggy and John to make sense of the process. Most of my staff has done some reading on lean and we've all found that it is very difficult to take the examples and the information in the books that we have, and at the library we have a big stack of them, and, and apply it to the library without another model to help us with that. So Peggy has just been amazing in being willing to help us do that. We decided to start with technical services because many of the actions in this department are physical and assembly line-like. Greg and I, along with Mary Anna and Val, her assistant, formed the library's contributions to the team. I recruited a state library consultant, Becky Heel, to serve as our cataloging expert. And of course, John and Peggy functioned as our lean experts. We began collecting metrics under the direction of Peggy. We measured how long new items wait to be processed, how much walking time was involved, and time studies of various processes like unpacking, jacketing books, and adding labels. Peggy and I had decided that this would be a value stream mapping event, and that meant that we would follow the path of material from the time it was selected up to the point it was put on a cart to shelf, which would be the current state. As we saw areas that needed work, we placed a starburst on the map of the current state. Later, we went back and looked at the starbursts and attempted to improve those areas. Sometimes we went to Gimba, or we went to the source, the place we were talking about, to get a better picture of the problem and determine what steps needed to be taken. When we addressed as many starbursts as possible, this became the future state that we would work to implement. We actually created a traditional gigantic value stream map with the Post-it notes and all the yarn that wraps around and, and everything. But at the library, we have very limited storage space and we didn't think we would be able to keep that very well. So Bobby created this mind map for us to demonstrate the value stream process that we went through. As a result of the day, we began using more systematic reports from our cataloging system. We decided not to utilize the Polaris acquisition software, which I'd been pushing Mary Anna to do. Mary Anna learned to use the OCLC connection software, so items needed original cataloging no longer sat on the shelf for weeks or months. We began counting items rather than checking off individual titles on the packing lists. And that one thing actually saved us more time than anything else. That saved us a ton of time. We also remodeled the office to create a U-shaped flow of materials to improve workflow. And we worked more from movable carts rather than storing items on shelving or on our desks. We also identified a receiving counter and a processing counter to help clarify the status of a book. Because this event looked at the overall operation of the technical services area, we did not have time to go into details such as processing magazines, mending, and inventory. We will likely go back and do an event on each of these areas, as well as a follow-up to the value stream mapping in order to measure improvement. Our next event, held in May, was an RCI, a rapid continuous improvement event, and it centered around our shelving process. What you see here is typically what our shelving looked like. And, and in addition to this, there would be five carts behind the counter full of books too. So we kind of had a backlog of shelving, a pretty consistent backlog. Our four shelvers joined Peggy and the same library staff members as before for the event, and this time Greg, due to his extensive experience, served as our shelving expert. Shelving had been erratic for a while and we frequently had most of our carts full, waiting for a shelve to report to work. We were ready to find a better process to get items on the shelves. Again, under Peggy's coaching, we collected metrics. We measured how long it took to organize a book cart by call number, to shelve a book cart, and to shelf-read the shelves to see if the items were in order. We also tracked the number of days it took to get books back to the shelves. And you can see from the slide that it really wasn't anything to brag about. The red is the number of days it actually took and the blue is the goals. So we weren't doing too well. We started the day by collecting additional information, using a measuring wheel to measure how far the shelvers walked back and forth between the circulation desk and the cart storage area. You can see the results of that on our spaghetti chart. Peggy also made a game out of seeing which shelve could shelve a row of books the quickest. The shelvers actually loved the measuring events. They loved using the, the measuring wheel and carrying it upstairs and, and competing to see who could shelve the quickest. It was almost like we were at a picnic instead of, instead of at work. When we collected the last of the information, we began to create the current state and use starbursts to indicate areas with opportunity to improve. We already knew the staffing wasn't consistent, so we went ahead and identified that as an opportunity. We found the shelvers did a lot of walking from the back storage area to the front desk, and we discovered that we were spending a large amount of time moving books from one cart to another because we had only five carts that could fit under the cabinets behind the front desk. And that's where they had to be in order to make it fit. So we brainstormed on this problem and we realized that the best way to move forward was to rebuild the cabinets to allow for the taller carts, thus eliminating the shifting of material from one cart to another, saving 45 minutes a week and walking back and forth from the storage area. I know it sounds like maybe an extreme thing to do, but we couldn't actually buy the short carts anymore. They had stopped making them. Otherwise, we would have just bought more short carts, which would have solved all the problems. But it took going to Gimba or going to the actual circulation desk, the source, and spending about 30 minutes of discussion to come up with a solution. We also discovered that we could clean up the area a little. For some reason, we were seeing things that we had looked at for years but never really noticed. Finally, we developed a schedule that would enable us to have a shelve working each day. With the new cabinets in place, we rarely have material on carts in the storage area. Of course, Bobby would take this picture with materials on the cart, but it was the only one we had. And things flow very smoothly with the shelving, and the shelvers are very proud of themselves and happy with that. Our last event was held on August 20th and it dealt with a newer position and process, holds. Again, our team included Peggy and the usual staff members, along with Rod, our holds clerk, and Nancy Medema, our expert from the state library. As part of our consortium, patrons can borrow materials from other Rivershare libraries. A van delivers and picks up items five days a week. Usually, there are between 350 and 600 items a day coming and going, and it is the holds clerk who processes everything and oversees the system. As an RCI event, and you'll remember that's rapid continuous improvement, we followed the same path, process that we used for shelving. We collected data, created the current state, looked for starburst, brainstormed improvements, developed the future state, and then assigned tasks and target dates to implement so we could make the changes necessary to actually create the future state. After conferring with Peggy, we collected metrics ahead of the event. How long it took to package returning slash hold items for delivery, how long it took to pick the items off the shelf, how long it took to sort delivery, how long it took to trap items for delivery, and how long it took to place the items on the hold shelf for patron pickup. As the, at the event, we were able to map Rod's typical movements to create our workflow spaghetti chart. Again, we were able to streamline the processes, especially the process of packing items for delivery. Rod had been counting and packing items at each step, which meant that by the time they were picked up, they had been packed, each time moving to a larger bag or bin, anywhere from three to five times. Rod now packages all items once a day. We also moved the delivery shelves closer to the back door to improve workflow. And this is an example where, when Greg trained Rod to do holds, he never said, every time you get more items to go in delivery, repack it all. But it's just something that kind of developed over time and we never go back and say, are you still holding to that method that I taught you when you came on staff? I think it's amazing how often we find people have tweaked it in their own way for the best of intentions and it ends up causing things to take a lot longer. Okay, so in addition to that, we were able to set some guidelines that did not previously exist. These included how many times you look for an item on the shelf before you declare it missing, and how long an item sits on the holds pickup shelf before you send it back to the owning library. Also, we reduced the number of slips per hold that we were printing from two to just one. All of this was documented in the future state and you can see what the and you can see what the future state looked like on the screen. After the event, Greg wrote standard work, which is a very important part of the Lean process. Standard work delineates the best practices to maintain constant and repeatable levels of quality. It also serves as a reference in the future when you are ready to see if there's room for more improvement. Standard work is something we write after each event, but since it often takes place a few days or a week down the road, and we're condensing everything for this talk, I haven't mentioned it before. That ends the summary of our events so far. It's important to remember exactly what Stephanie told you, that you never complete Lean. We're still tweaking the holds event, and we plan to continue revisiting each area hoping to find new ways of removing waste and adding value. Now that the library has a little familiarity with Lean, we'll share some of our thoughts about the process. Most importantly, Lean for us right now is time-consuming. I assume this gets better the more you use it and the more automatic it becomes, but the three events that we've done have taken quite a bit of time. A related matter is that we're open 62 hours a week, and many staff members are only budgeted and scheduled for desk time. It can be hard to get everybody together who needs to participate in an event. Another issue is that we feel Lean is difficult to learn without a mentor. We would never have gotten off the ground without Peggy's help. I don't know how Lean will work in the more creative aspects of our field, such as children's programming and social media, and I worry what will happen in these areas if we're required to Lean everything. I have the same concern about applying Lean to areas where you work in partnership. That said, Lean is an extremely powerful tool. We've solved problems like the carts under the cabinets that we hadn't been able to solve in years of talking. With Lean, we saw different staff members taking on leadership roles and learning new skills. This is Greg's second PowerPoint in the whole time he's worked at the library, and both of them have been Lean PowerPoints. So that's just one example of that. Staff has demonstrated an amazing willingness to make changes, plus no one has asked to reverse the changes and return to the former state. We have noticed that staff has enjoyed participating in the events, and there's a strong sense of ownership in the process. One thing that really surprised me with this is nobody has been afraid with a Lean event. Nobody has, I mean, usually you hear that through the grapevine, "Oh, so-and-so is really afraid they're going to lose their job." And I have one staff member who regularly comes and asks me if she's going to lose her job. And nobody, you know who that is, nobody is afraid of that happening with the Lean events, I think because they all feel very much a part of it. Finally, and most powerfully, Lean is changing the way the library staff thinks. We will be discussing an issue in a meeting, and Greg and I will look at each other and say, "Go to Gimba," or "We've got to Lean that." It's becoming a part of our vocabulary and thought process. So where's the library going with Lean? Everywhere. Now that we have Lean in our toolkit, we will be using it frequently. In fact, beginning in 2014, we'll be planning and executing one Lean event per month. On the to-do list is reports slash statistics, home delivery, magazine processing, DVD ordering and processing, weeding, purchasing, outsourcing versus original processing, databases, circulation, interlibrary loan, and so on and so on. If you have me back next year, I'll fill you in on our progress. So any questions?
Sounds like you're probably ahead of the curve statewide for a library.
Oh, way more than statewide, nationally-wide. The only things I've found about libraries using Lean are libraries that are in very big systems and have multiple branches, and they've brought consultants in to Lean the delivery of materials from branch to branch. But otherwise, it just is, I think it's a cost thing. I think there's a lot of return on using Lean, and a lot of that return is cost, especially as you start doing a lot of these events and you can put together some of the savings. But there's a lot of cost in getting there, and you have to make that a priority. Plus, there aren't any Lean library consultants. Like, you can find a lot of Lean manufacturing consultants or things like that. With libraries, when they spend the money for a consultant, they want a fundraiser. So, yeah.
Anyone else, Counselor? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, next on the agenda, item number five, Presentation of Fiscal Year 2012/2013 Budget Basis Financial Reports. Committee.
Tonight, we're going to review the fiscal year-end FY13 budget basis financial statements. It's in the same format as we did for the last several years, actually. The actually audited financial report is still in process. The auditors have finished their onsite work, and now we'll be preparing the report, and that'll be early December that the Audit Committee will meet and review that. And then it'll actually go to Counsel after that. The first area we'll review, as we do in all years, is the General Fund. That's what we spend the most time on during the budget process. We've got, first slide is actually the General Fund fund statement, the first page of that. It shows the various major revenue sources in the General Fund. And again, property taxes are the main revenue source at $6.9 million. There's also the other areas, various other taxes, licenses and permits, fines and forfeitures, intergovernmental, charges for service, use of money and property, and other. So total revenues in the General Fund, $11,890,000. The expenditures, this is grouped by function, and so this combines the major functions in the General Fund. The largest, again this year, is public safety. That includes police, fire, emergency management, animal control. It's further broken down into current and capital in that same schedule. So for public safety, $7.7 million in current, and then another $87,000 in capital, outland, and public safety. Other areas, significant areas, public works, $1,829,000 in current and another $109,000 in capital. The culture and recreation function, $2753,000 in current and additional $181,000 in capital. And that includes the library, art center, and all the various park and rec activities. General government, a little over $2 million. That includes the general city administration, mayor and council's budget, city administrator, finance, HR, building and grounds, and the insurance program for the city. So the expenditures for the year, $15,556,000. And so if we take revenues, the difference between revenues and expenditures before our transfers in, our revenues are actually under expenditures by $4,466,000. The next page shows the transfers, other financing sources and uses. We have a significant amount of operating transfers in. That's transfers from the employee benefits tax levy, which is a separate fund that's transferred into the General Fund. Road use taxes fund most of the public works expenditures. The ambulance transfers in funds for a prorated portion of the fire department's costs. There's also perpetual care interest, and then there's some TIF transfers in for admin, economic development admin costs. So those transfers in totaled $5,932,000. We do have some transfers out, the total $1.4 million. Some items that are required to be taxes-lebied in the General Fund and then transferred out, which include the levy tax levy, the transit levy. And then every year, the city council also allocates funds to the equipment replacement reserve and the computer replacement reserve. So those total up to the $1.4 million. So if we take the revenues minus expenditures and then plus the net other financing sources, it ended up for the year that revenues and other sources were slightly over expenditures and other uses, and that's a good thing. The fund is basically holding its own. That difference is $37,000, about $38,000. Our beginning fund balance, $3,294,000. Added to that in our ending fund balance, $3,332,000. And then we did have a lot of purchase orders outstanding at year-end, and that's that $250,000. A lot of those are for public works, the equipment that was on order but not received as of June 30. So the unreserved fund balance came out $3,810,000, which is a very strong fund balance. And just comparing that to where we thought we would be. When we did the original FY13 budget, and that would have been in March of 13, we thought we'd only have $2,465,000 in fund balance. A year ago, when we did the revised estimate for the year, primarily because we started the year at a higher fund balance, the ending fund balance in the revised estimate was $2,949,000. So our actual ending balance, the $3,810,000, is over our estimate by $132,000, which is very good. And then we do that measure comparing ending fund balance to expenditures for the year, and that's where our General Fund policy comes into play. And it did come out at the end of the year that it was 17.93%, which is, again, very good. When we did the revised estimate, we thought we would have 16.7%. And then I've added the boxed area down there, and it's actually probably a little better than that because about $210,000 of encumbrances will be funded from road use tax. So if we took that into consideration, the ending balance would be over our estimate by $344,000, and that would turn out to be a 19.16% calculation. And you can play around with numbers, but it is still, without adding the road use tax, we still have a very good fund balance at year-end. The next page, and I'll try to go through this relatively quickly, just general areas and why we have a stronger fund balance than what we expected. The first part of this page, actually, there's a few things that weren't purchased that have been requested be carried over to next year. The main one was the Weed Park playground resurfacing, but that will be funded by the Park and Rec Trust, so that really didn't have an effect on fund balance. And then there's also some donations. In the police area, they didn't purchase the equipment yet. That was only $1,000. And then the art center's Japanese garden improvements weren't done by June 30, and they asked to carry that forward. The next big area, how revenues compared to what we had estimated when we did the revised estimate. And in total, those revenues, which include transfers in, are under where we thought they would be, by $338,000. And that overall difference is primarily due to transfers in being under, and those transfers in are under because the corresponding expenditures were also under. But just the various areas, the tax collections were over the revised estimate. Utility tax was slightly under. Utility franchise fee is over by about $19,000. Cable franchise was under $2,700. Road use tax transfer in was under by that $389,000. Of that amount, though, $210,000 is for their encumbrances. But still, they did come in under, which leaves that much money in the road use tax fund, which will be useful this year in making sure we get all our capital projects financed. The employee benefits transfer in is under by about $42,000, and that's because the corresponding expenditures were also under. Health insurance transfer for the wellness, similar. It's under because expenditures were under. Hotel motel tax did end up under our estimate by $14,000. Very positive note, though, building and zoning revenues was over our estimate by $111,000, so a very good year for building permits. Library revenues exceeded the estimate by $4,700. Pam did a good job collecting fines. Okay, that helped parking as well. Art center, they did exceed their estimate. Parks and Rec overall is under by about $15,000. A year ago, it was way over our estimate because of the very good weather a year ago. And this spring was not a good year for recreation programs, including the aquatic center in June. The extremely wet rainy days affected various park activities, as well as the golf course, which we'll hit a little bit later. Public works, or I guess cemetery revenues were slightly under. Public works revenues were over. Police grants were under $14,000, but the court fines were over by about $26,000. The automatic traffic camera enforcement, that was actually under our estimate by about $38,000. In that case, though, we did probably have an optimistic revenue target. The revenues were still $662,000. That was down from a year ago of $783,000. So it was a decrease from last year of $121,000, which means that they are working to improve people's driving habits in those areas. Other police revenues were over. Licenses and permits were slightly over. Fire department revenues were over by $14,000. And then the transfer from the Park and Rec Trust, since the playground wasn't completed yet, that did come out under. And then various other revenues that totaled up to the $29,683. So that really demonstrates the overall detail of why the revenues and transfers in were less than what we'd expected. The next page is the General Fund expenditures. And again, this is broken down by major function. And this is where we really was very positive at the end of this year, and that's why our fund balance did decrease, or did increase to what it is. Almost, I believe, almost every area actually was under their budget. There was a couple minor exceptions at the airport due to a runway blow-up late in June, but every other activity was under their budget allocation. General government was under $19,000. Public safety, in total, under $122,000. Library, art center, and parks was under by $66,000. The planning, zoning, community development was under by about $21,800. Public works was under $183,000. The airport subsidy was over what we thought it would be because of the runway blow-up by the $3,500. And some of the levy tax collections were slightly over where we thought we'd be, so those were also over. But in total, departments were under their budgets by $470,000, which is very good. dollars, which is very good. The next page is where we compare all the other funds to where we thought they would be. The first column shows the, well, the various funds are listed on the left-hand side, the original budget that was done in the spring of two thousand and twelve, the revised estimate that was done in the spring of two thousand and thirteen, and then our actual ending balance, and then whether that's a favorable ending balance or an unfavorable. I've numbered and footnoted some things here, and I'm going to probably just skip over and hit the highlights of those tonight. The General Fund, as we said before, it was over a hundred and thirty-two thousand, and that's what we just reviewed. I'm going to skip down to number three, which is the Water Pollution Control Fund. That ending balance was one hundred and forty-one thousand higher than what we'd expected. And in that fund, the revenues actually came in under by sixty-two thousand, but the expenditures were under by two hundred thousand, which resulted in that difference. Collection and Drainage Budget, it ended up two hundred and three thousand higher than what we estimated. In that case, expenditures were under by two hundred and seven thousand, and revenues were under slightly by about forty-one hundred. The Collection Drainage Fund, a lot of that is reserved in case there are some significant sewer repairs that are needed during the year, and that accounts for a lot of the difference there. Refuge Collection, it did come up under by about twenty-five thousand where we thought it would be. In that case, it was, there was a number of things that played into that. We account at year end for increases in compensated absences, and that's crude sick leave vacation and other post-employment benefits, and that did increase by about ten thousand. Another part, the rest of the expenditures are over by about twenty-one thousand. Some of that is because our waste estimate, our tipping fees to the transfer station were higher. The tonnage that was disposed of was higher than what we had allowed for in the budget. And then there was also increased vehicle maintenance costs. Revenues were slightly over in Refuge Collection by about seventy-two hundred. In the landfill area, it shows that the ending fund balance was a deficit of a million eighty-two thousand, which was forty-nine thousand more of a deficit than what we thought it would be when we did the budget. During the year, though, we did reduce that deficit by four hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is very good. Just several years ago, it was a two-point-five million dollar deficit, so we really have made progress on that. And even though we didn't meet the current year budget target, we're still ahead of where, in that long-range plan that we adopted several years ago, we're still ahead of where we thought the deficit would be right now, so we are making good progress on that. I'll skip down and probably do Transit, number seven. That shows, this is a little misleading, that we're a hundred and twenty, about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand lower than what we thought. We did have purchase orders out for two buses at year end, though, and that's why it shows a deficit. Those buses will receive about eighty percent grant funding. So if we take out consideration for the buses, the ending fund balance would be fifty-eight thousand, which would be forty thousand higher than what we'd anticipated, and that will help fund the local share of the other two buses that were recently purchased. In general, and then also the DIRA grant, if you just compare budget revenues and expenditures, that also comes into play in this department, but it is in a good position and actually better than what we thought it would be. Golf Course Fund, that is close to eighty thousand lower than what we thought it would be, and that is directly related to revenues being lower this spring. Extremely wet year, our season passes were down. It seems like when we have the nicer early weather, people buy their season passes, and the longer people wait before they buy them, if it rains every day, those do fluctuate from year to year. And then greens fees were also down in the spring months. Looked at just where we were this July and August compared to a year ago, and we're right on the same pace for the months of July and August, but that spring did impact the Golf Course Fund. Number eleven, the Boat Harbor, it's a smaller amount. It's seventy-five hundred less than where we thought it would be, and that was also impacted by the weather. If people can't get their boats in early, we had, I think, three floods in the Mississippi. We had a very good Boat Harbor year a year ago, and it's just kind of the opposite this Down to ambulance, number twelve, and that's over by forty-seven thousand, and that's, we had increased revenue by about most of that, forty-five thousand, increased ambulance runs, so a very strong year for ambulance revenues. Go down to number fourteen, the health insurance. That's over our estimate by two hundred thousand, and that's directly related to claims and admin fees being less than what we'd estimated. And again, that's always good to have that. We know that things can turn around in health insurance quickly, but it was a good year in the health insurance fund. On, number seventeen, the Local Option Tax. That shows that it's over by about ninety-six thousand. That's only because we tried to estimate the funding transfers that are needed each June thirtieth for the projects, and that was, the projects were a little less far alone than what we thought. The revenue, however, was right as we had budgeted. Number eighteen, the Road Use Tax Fund, and this is over our estimate by four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Some of that is due to the road use tax revenues actually being over by seventy-four thousand, and that is in part due to, you know, our added population with our annexation, including replays last year. It did increase our road use tax funds, and I think that was effective in the spring. So whenever it was official, it did add to our population and on our revenue. The funding transfers out of road use tax, and this correlates to what was in the general fund, our transfers out were three hundred and eighty-four thousand less than what we had estimated, but two hundred and ten thousand of that is for those encumbrances and will be used in the current year. And then I think I'll skip down to number twenty, Clark House Sunset Park. That's under by thirty-nine thousand four hundred. In public housing, we actually chose not to draw down some of the capital funds this year because it acted against us when they computed operating subsidy a year ago. So the expenditures were under the revised estimate by one hundred and twenty-three, and the revenues were under by one hundred and sixty-three because we chose not to draw down that money. But there is uncertainty in HUD funding going forward, so we're being a little cautious in that area as well. And Section Eight did come out a little higher at seven thousand, but those are the major items. If you have any questions on any other, the other funds that I've kind of skipped over, they're all in pretty good shape. The biggest ones that had the shortfalls were actually in the park area, the golf course, but we do think that that was just directly related to weather. Footnotes are in the PowerPoint. Then I'll skip back to a graph of the general fund balance, and this is for the last twenty years. And in this one, the most recent is on top, so if you'll know, the last two years, we've had a very good ending fund balance, which allowed us to get to that percentage of expenditures that we've had the last couple of years. And then you can see how it's varied through the years with our biggest challenges in the FY oh-seven, eight, and nine areas. The same information is on the next page in a table form, and this is, on this one, we actually start at the top with the oldest, and it's kind of a chronology of our challenges in budgeting the last twenty years. In ninety-three, ninety-four, that's when the M and E tax was effective, and we were still getting some reimbursements from the state for a while. But at that time, we had an eighteen percent general fund balance, eighteen percent of expenditures. The next year, nineteen point five, so we really had in the good fund balances at that time. And then in FY oh-one oh-two, that's when it dipped to fifteen point four percent when the reimbursement, the state reimbursement went away. And then, two years after that, in FY oh-four, is when the state eliminated their annual operating subsidies to cities, and that was three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And after that, we really did have some budget challenges. It dipped to, went to thirteen point three, twelve point three, eleven point seven, and then basically our lowest at ten point eight in FY oh-nine. And since then, we've been able to increase it. And last year, it was twenty point four percent. This year, it's lower at the seventeen point nine, but that was a planned decrease in that City Council during budget chose to fund the fire engine and the financial software right from fund balance. So that decrease this year was budgeted for and planned, and we still ended up with a good fund balance. And then just a summary, that seventeen point nine percent ending is a lot better than our original budget of fourteen point three, and also our revised estimate of sixteen point seven. And those amounts are all over that our current fund balance policy, which still officially states a minimum of ten percent. In the last several years, there's been a concerted effort by council to increase that, in part due to Moody's comments during a rating review. Having this higher fund balance will let us probably take a realistic look at updating that policy, which is the next item on the agenda, to set a new target level. The ending balance also puts us in a good position going into the next budget, but we do have some challenges coming up that we know about, and that is the commercial industrial property rollbacks that were approved last year that will be phased in, so those are going to be challenges going forward. There were positive balances in all the funds except for the landfill fund, but that landfill fund deficit did decrease by the four hundred and thirty-five thousand to a million eighty-two thousand. But, and again, as I said before, it's ahead of that original budget deficit reduction plan, and most other funds are close to or in a better position than what we thought they would be. Probably the exception is golf course, but we think that that isn't a long-term thing that we should have that turnaround. So that's the, basically, the year-end summary, and if there's any questions, we can discuss them now.
You want to have questions, Kelsey?
Good presentation.
Yeah.
I don't have any question, but I'd just like to commend council and staff, because if you look at, if you look at the numbers over the last four years, from where we were to where we've gotten, this city has really improved its financial condition to the point that we have an opportunity now to set a new policy.
Definitely. It would have been difficult to set one back when we were struggling with the eleven percent.
And so I think everybody should be commended, the staff, the council, everyone should be commended for that because it's just a great turnaround.
Well, and you can see examples of efficiency increases in a lot of the different operating departments. I can think of the sewer monitoring equipment and magic, and then, well, like what's being done at the library and across a lot of departments, so that's really good.
Anyone else, council? Well, Natty, you want to segue right into item six?
I'm glad you asked. I did, we did send out the draft of general fund balance policy with the agenda, and I've actually put it on the PowerPoint. I'm not sure you can see it, but I've highlighted the key parts, and we'll just kind of go through that briefly. If you've read it before, it's redundant, but we've tried to address things, and we're not even sure when we would like you to consider adopting it, or if you want to have more discussion. But I think it will provide a good basis going into the budget, just if we have some kind of updated policy in mind. We can consider adopting it before we start budget if you'd like. Some of the things, the opening part of the policy does just say the purpose of the policy. The general fund balance is one of the key measures of the city's financial stability, and there's four areas we highlighted there. If you have a strong general fund balance, it mitigates risk that can occur from unforeseen revenue fluctuations. It can also fund unanticipated expenditures, including those that may result from a natural or other disasters that could hit the community. It does provide cash flow, so we can pay bills throughout the whole fiscal year. And then lastly, it does demonstrate financial strength to, strengths to credit rating agencies when we get our bond ratings. And there's more things that the rating agencies look at besides just fund balance, but it is one of the key areas and one that used to be commented on, but it, and that was actually two ratings ago that we had that comment, and last time, we didn't get that comment again. The next page, and this I will just skim over. We want to get in the policy some of the Government Accounting Standards Board classifications of parts of general fund balance, and this was adopted several years ago, and there's non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And when we're looking at the percent of available fund balance that we do the computation on, it would be the unassigned area. So that's what we would be using to make the computation of the percentage. And then the next part is actually kind of the meat of the policy, and did do some research into, actually, the Government Finance Officers has a publication on financial policies and some general guidelines, and then there was, did look at several other cities' policies to come up with what we thought would be, something would be suitable for the city of Musketeen. Basically, most of them recommended at least two months of revenues or expenditures as a minimum level of fund balance. And if you take two divided by twelve, that comes up with that sixteen point seven percent. So that's what we're thinking is probably a reasonable minimum target level going forward. And again, it would be a minimum level. That next paragraph, though, and this is something we added that the city council may consider during budget, setting a budgeted ending balance at a lower amount than that, perhaps down to fifteen percent, because it does seem like in all recent years, our ending balance has has come out higher than what we'd expected. So if it was service-level reductions, and it turned out we didn't need to make those, it's something that council can, can set each year on an annual basis, whether it be the 16.7 or if they want to count on us being conservative budgeters and then actually budget going to the 15. That last paragraph on this, though, and this is similar to what we did with the fire engine and the financial software. General fund balances in excess of that minimum, in excess of 16.7, and that could be balances up to 20% to 25% would further add to the city's financial stability, allow us to address revenue fluctuations or disaster situations, and demonstrate creditworthiness. But as part of the budget process, it's proposed that city council, like what was done with the fire engine, can consider using part of that for one-time capital purchases. And it's, I think it's important that that be one-time rather than something that would, you know, increase staffing, you know, that's recurring, so it would be year after year. And then some other general policy provisions. First paragraph, maintaining the fund balance. In this case, if at the end of the year, the ending fund balance was calculated to be less than our minimum, less than the 16.7, it says the city shall plan to adjust budget resources or expenditure in the subsequent year or years to restore that. So develop a plan to restore it to the minimum level. And that can be for normal operations, or it could be for some kind of disaster-type situation as well. The next paragraph, utilization of fund balance, and this, except in extraordinary circumstances, the unassigned balance should not be used to fund any portion of the ongoing and routine operating expenditures of the city. It should be used for unforeseen emergencies, cash flow, and financial stability. Some of the, the next paragraph that we've identified some extraordinary circumstances, and these have a potential of impacting us, those, any significant revenue fluctuations, and that can be the state legislative action limiting property tax revenue or limiting or eliminating automatic traffic enforcement cameras. So those would have a significant effect on the city, and that would have to be taken into consideration when the fund balance was discussed. The next sentence I found in somebody else's policy, but in the event that use of unassigned fund balance is necessary to provide a short-term solution to maintaining essential services, the city will evaluate current and future economic conditions to evaluate the extent of expenditure reductions or revenue enhancements that would need to be achieved, that would be needed to achieve day-to-day financial stability and to restore the fund balance. So we've tried in this draft policy to address things, so there can be a balance between providing services and maintaining that fund balance. But as the chart on the M&amp;E elimination and the state elimination, things do happen. The changes are made that need to be addressed, and sometimes it takes a while to get through those kind of changes.
Well, Nancy, and to that last point, that's maybe why that first word, maintaining fund balance, that's why it's, prints these years, plural, because sometimes it could take.
And it really could.
Have to correct in the immediate.
Yeah, and if it does take multiple years, at least there should be a plan.
A plan.
Right.
Anyone else, Council?
And again, we can decide if you want to adopt it before budget or if we want to do it as part of the budget.
I think it'd probably be good to adopt it before the budget so that you have a budgeting guideline right here that I'd hate to go into budget and want to adopt this policy and then find out we're at a 12% and it's going to violate our own policy that we're considering adopting. So I think we need to adopt it soon and so that staff can work it, work towards that when they're doing the preliminary budget.
We'll just go around the horn here for consensus.
I agree with Phil. I expect it would be helpful to the department heads and Greg to know what exactly that target policy is, so we should probably go ahead before the budget and make that known.
Yeah, I agree. Bob?
Agree.
And you, Nancy?
I think that's a good idea. The only thing, I wouldn't want to do it right this minute because it takes a while for it to sink in.
Oh, you don't need.
You know, you want to think about it.
We're not asking for adoption tonight, obviously. We want you to take your time, take a look at it, read it. And, you know, it's such an important policy for the budget, you know, we'd like to have, you know, complete council before we take action. Budget is your number-one policy document every year, so.
So we probably put it on one of the agendas in November, and if there's any comments as you read through it, any language to tweak, we can, we can consider that, too.
Considering you guys have started on budget already?
Soon, not yet.
Earlier in November would be, the first meeting would probably be better than the last.
Okay. We can do that.
Okay.
Rules are meant to bend or break or challenge, right?
Thank you, Nancy.
Sure.
And any comments, Council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
He's adjourned.
Well, that was quick.